Are you?
Thank you for getting that changed.
Oh, yes, no problem anytime.
Oh, that's a good article. The West Valley Journal.
My big, uh, buck in the. I actually didn't read it. I saw the big bug on the bar. But I figured nobody reads that anyway.
Some people do.
You come after I just. I did one of my kids. I got it over. Went to the rec center and saw. I read it. So you just promised the city the West, uh, splashback. I was like, I'd.
You can read into that, yes, but those words weren't exactly.
I was like, but I didn't know. She's like, yeah, she just promised all the cities.
Do it. We have four nods.
Y'all look good in those new chairs.
Is that all it takes? Just new chair?
Notice.
Yeah, yeah, I feel like a.
I don't remember what the old ones look like, so. Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. This June tenth, twenty twenty five, we're beginning our meeting. At four thirty two P M. In the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present at the table, so we have. Councilmember Hune, Councilmember Norfeld, Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Whitstone, Councilmember Harmon, Councilmember Christensen, myself. We're also joined by our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. The first item is our minutes of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Turn them to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion approves minutes of May twenty seven.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And vote stand approved. Okay, we have our review of our regular meeting tonight, Development Agency, Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority, and the Municipal Building Authority. Meeting. Meetings of June second. And there has been one change to the agenda, so we'll turn the time over to Alex Kidd. And it's here in the corner. There she is, to come up and explain that to us.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having me. My name is Alex Kidd, and I work for the Division of Neighborhood Services. And so I'm just here to talk a little bit about a grant that Healthy West Valley, one of our resident committees, would like to accept. And so this grant is called the Overdose Data to Action Grant, lovingly called O D two A. And this grant, we, um, it originally comes, the funding comes from uh, the federal government, came to the state, came to the counties. Um, and so now Salt Lake County is distributing those funds uh, of twenty thousand dollars and West Valley City uh, with the Healthy West Valley uh, would like to accept those. Um, so before I kind of get into how we would utilize the grant, um, last year, Salt Lake County Health Department, along with the Healthy West Valley Committee, conducted a community resource assessment. Um, and that was specific to opioid um, knowledge in the community. Uh, and we came back as a stage three um, out of nine. And one would be like total denial. We don't have an issue with opioids. There's, that's not a problem. And a nine being, we acknowledge it, we've fixed all the problems, we're amazing. So we're three, uh, which means we have vague awareness. Um, the community recognizes that um, there may be issues uh, with misuse of opioids um, here. But they don't really know what's going on to uh, acknowledge that. So, um, and how to support those who may be having those issues. So based on that information, we've looked at the grant and we would um, like to use that twenty grand to do a couple of different things. Uh, first, we'd like to hire an intern to get the work that we want done, done. Uh, it would be a short term intern just for the summer. Um, and then we would create a couple of different education opportunities for residents. Uh, we'd do that in a couple of different formats. We would create a toolkit, which would really be like a brochure or a short handbook with information um, that people could access this summer, but then for a long time coming um, with information on what opioid misuse is, resources in the community, um, and how to gain access to those. Um, we'd like to provide that in English and Spanish, then um, not everybody learns by reading. So we'd like to do some short form videos that would be available on social medias, most likely Instagram. Um, somewhat similar to the Live On Campaign, if you've ever seen those educational materials on their Instagram. Um, just again, reiterating that same information that the toolkit provides. And then lastly, um, creating some in-person opportunities for people to be educated. Um, creating that curriculum so that we'll, we'll do classes specifically uh, this summer and possibly into the fall for classes. Um, but creating that curriculum that can be used long term, um, again, educating residents. Um, we'd also potentially like to use some of the funding to support staff in educating them on harm reduction um, and how to support community. That may be first aid, uh, or sorry, first responders, uh, police and fire, or any uh, staff members that commonly um, engage with community members. Um, and then lastly, we'd like to support with the Partners in the Park uh, program. They are willing to expand um, the program that they do to a sixth event, um, technically hosted in South Salt Lake, because we are partnering with South Salt Lake, since we're so close to them, at the Piaquai site, um, which is literally across the road from us. Um, and so that Partners in the Park would provide um, community members to come out and um, access different resources, really specific to harm reduction and those kinds of types of education. So that is what we're hoping to utilize the grant for, if you allow us to accept it. Do you have any questions?
And so for this, they've got this opportunity, so we're gonna study it and then vote on it in regular meeting today. It's one of those really quick turnarounds so that they can accept the money.
Yes, and thank you for doing that, because it is quick.
That is very quick. So any questions for Alex on this item? I think it seems like a good opportunity for us to take advantage of the money. Okay, seeing that, thank you.
So much for your time.
All right, well now. Um, go to our public hearings and we have the municipal executive officer total pay in, or compensation increase. And we'll turn the time over to our H R. Paula Melgar. There we go. Everybody behind us now, I can't tell who's here and who's not here. Sorry, I had to think over.
Good evening, Paula Melgar, H R Director. Um, we are planning to have a public hearing on the executive uh, compensation for uh, executive officers. Um, so Utah Code requires us to hold hearings every time executive officers are um, change salaries. And so um, based on our market study, there were a few positions um, that were below market, and so we made a small adjustment. It's about the five thousand dollars difference. And we are proposing a public hearing to receive input at our next city council meeting. Any questions?
Questions? So is there a list somewhere which executive officers?
So according to the code, there's about forty nine executive officers within the city, and we didn't wanna list them all, so it's just.
Is there a place to refer to who's on that list or what positions?
Yes, so you can either go to the code, Utah Code ten, dash three, eight point eight. Um, and then uh, within our own city um, directory, there should be the titles and positions.
Right, thank you, of course. But are you asking for the titles or what the increases are for each person? So I think you're asking for what, who got what?
Right. Yeah, so we have about forty nine positions that fit that description. According to market studied, there are three positions that didn't fit. We didn't want to list them specifically, so not to create any type of uncomfortable feeling between uh, the staff, so.
So there's not really a list anywhere that says who got what as far as an increase?
And I would imagine the market study is done with cities of our comparable size and things like that.
Yeah.
Is the market study available then?
Um, for mid-market study, yes, it's, it's available.
Okay.
We're still working through a few things, but yes.
I'm just, I'm the newbie. I can still play the newbie card. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So does it, uh, new rule, like you have to make the presentation in front of us and that announcement before the happen?
Um, you don't necessarily need to come before the city council before we announce it. We could just issue a notice to the public saying that next city council meeting, we'll have a hearing about this, but I, if you and John are very uh, strong about being transparent with you first, and then if you're okay with it, we'll proceed to read what we're doing, so.
The legislature changed it, so we have, anytime there's those increases, we have to have a public hearing.
The public hearing itself is mandatory if we make the changes, but we wanted to bring it to you.
I didn't see that in the past.
Remembering what I'm remembering, you've never seen something like this.
Yeah, it's about two years old this.
I was gonna say, I think we saw it last year.
Yes.
And then this is our second time doing it.
All right. Makes sense.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Right, well now go to application G P two twenty twenty five, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Pastrick, Community Development Director. So this is a proposed change to the city's general plan. So within our general plan, we have what's referred to as a major street plan. And that plan identifies the, basically the location or alignment of major streets, as well as the, the width of those streets. Uh, whether those are existing streets uh, or uh, new streets, and it's really to reflect uh, not just uh, in the case of if it's an existing street, what the existing uh, width is, but what our desired future width is. In some cases, that's the the same as what it is currently, and other cases, it may need to be widened. And so, yeah, what you see here, this is what we currently have adopted. Our major street plans, you can see you have different uh, street classifications, so uh, the smallest being a three lane collector with sixty six feet of right of way going up to, all the way up to freeway size type facilities. And the, this map here now shows what's proposed. And in your packet, there is a uh, a spreadsheet that uh, basically lists all of the changes, so there, there are many uh, changes. And to maybe take a step back and explain uh, why we did this and what, sort of the main reason for the changes. Um, first of all, as part of our uh, several general plan updates we're making, we uh, employed a consulting firm to do an analysis of our, basically all of our major streets in the city. That was partly for this, but also we're uh, in the middle of doing an update to our impact fee, so it was kind of a two for one project for us. And um, what we found, what that analysis showed is that in several instances, we were showing uh, a, uh, the need for a five lane road, when in fact, the, the data shows that we don't only need three. We only need three lanes. And so that's probably the biggest change, is that several streets were, if you will, downgraded, if you will, to reflect only a three lane uh, street as opposed to five. And again, that, that was bared out through the, the modeling that was done by the consultant. Um, there were uh, other changes, uh, for example, certain intersection improvements. So you can see on this map, there's the, the diamond symbol that's there. That um, there were some where intersection changes were either already completed or no longer needed, and then other ones that were added. So again, but in that spreadsheet, it identifies all of the, all of the changes that are proposed. Now, and I'm happy to go to, to discuss any of those uh, individual line items, if there are questions. The one thing I wanted to talk about is what I call an unintended consequence from this. And that is that in our zoning ordinance, there's a section that talks about um, what we call the R M zone eligibility. And essentially what it says, and you can see all the standards there, but in order to be eligible for R M zoning, you have to, your property has to have access and frontage on a, or a street that has a certain right of way width, right, in the major street plan, so it references the major street plan. Well, with certain streets being downgraded, that's actually reducing the eligibility, meaning making fewer properties eligible. So when we discuss that with the planning commission, they're like, well, let's, let's look into that further. And so I have a number of slides here we shared with the planning commission. But in, in summary, and again, I'm, I'm happy to go into more details than council would like. We found that really the impact i- in practice was pretty small, pretty negligible. And so in the end, the planning commission was fine of just making these major street plan changes and not changing the code and just keeping the code as is, realizing that there are some properties that, that currently would be technically eligible that no longer would be with this change. And again, I, I can go through, this is, you know, for example, this, this table here shows um, those, the changes, not all the changes, but the changes, the impact, the eligibility for the R M zone. And then the slides that follow, just kind of highlight those areas and, and again, if there are specific questions about any of these streets, we can talk about those and, and highlight the areas that would be affected.
So a question for me.
Yes.
Um, the county has the Corridor Preservation Fund, that we can get monies to buy property for future expansion of intersections and different roads. Do we have roads that are non-existing right now that we could use that to acquire property to make some of these changes?
I see Dan shaking his head, yes, so.
And then this helps us also with our funding from W F R C as far as future roads being funded by the state and the feds, with having a major street plan like this?
Um, well, the, what's more important there is, so Y S H Front Regional Council has their regional transportation plan. And so in order to be eligible for the state or federal money, it has to be in that plan, so. Um, and, and many of these are already in that plan, but if, if they're not, then that's something we would have to actually request, and they would have to make that addition to the, to their plan, that that facility be included.
Okay, so they won't just automatically look at this and say, ooh, let's add it all to ours?
Not automatically. That'd be nice, but no.
So maybe help me understand this. So let's look at the third one up from the bottom.
Yes.
South Mountain View Quarter to seventy two hundred west. So can you explain to me what that's doing then?
Absolutely. So in our plan right now, um, prior to this change, uh, our plan has said, and it's said for many years, that pretty much all of Thirty Fifth South needs to be seven lanes, okay? With this adjustment, it's saying west of Mountain View Quarter, it only needs to be five lanes. And we, and we even had that conversation with U Dot and said, hey, we're, our modeling showing this, you, you agree? And they said, yeah, we're, we were with the same opinion.
And then along Thirty Fifth, U Dot has those easements or I mean, whatever that, the holiday wanted to remodel and expand, and they couldn't go so far because there was a U Dot easement, is that right? Am I remembering that right?
I, that one, I, I don't recall the specifics, but in some cases, you know, over the years, there's different projects that have come in. We've had some that have essentially dedicated right of way uh, for in, in anticipation of widening, but, but it's kind of a mixed bag as you go down the street.
No other questions?
So I do.
Or slightly hesitating to ask?
No, I'm just, just. Would, would most of our major roads be at least sixty six feet?
Yeah, so we, as far as um, this plan is concerned, we only, we only look at roads that are three lanes or wider, so anything less than that, it's, it's not considered in this.
There are no other questions? Thank you, Mr. Pastrick. All right, uh, we'll now turn the time over to Ms. Knapp for application Z T two twenty twenty five Granite Credit Union.
Hi, good afternoon. So this application is a text amendment request from Granite Credit Union. And they are looking to amend section seven two one one two, which is our temporary use ordinance to allow for a mobile financial institution as a temporary use. So just a little history with temporary uses. Basically, those are just, um, we have seasonal based uses and event type uses. But what the code does is it sets forth the requirements for these uses, which have um, specifications for duration, how many events can happen, and that, the intent of that is to keep them temporary. So we don't have a site where they just continually have stuff rotating through. This is, we have Christmas tree sales that it can be there for six months, or if you have car sales, there's a specified time for that. Again, just to keep them more on a temporary seasonal basis. And then we also have things like mobile medical units, construction site trailers and things like that. So this use just didn't really fit into anything existing that we had in the code. So they have, we've just basically added a new category for this. And so uh, with a mobile financial institution, and we didn't create, have to create a new definition or anything, we already have financial institution defined. So just adding mobile in front of that just basically means it's a mobile bank. And so with Granite Credit Union, they um, they basically wanted, and they put this in your packet too, they had a pretty lengthy description of why they wanted to make the change. But basically, it's important to them to make sure that they can have um, continuity with their financial services, so just being out in the community and having the mobile bank just helps people have uninterrupted services. And then um, so that's why they broke this down into having two different kinds of uses. So the first one is they wanna be able to use their mobile unit when they are building a branch. So when they're doing a remodel or construction of a site, having the ability to have that unit out on the property so that people, they can get customers and people knowing that they're coming. And then the second one is in partnership with another business, they wanna be able to come to the site and provide financial services, and it'd be no more than two times a week. And they would have their own dedicated parking space, not, not be there overnight, and not be there for more than eight hours a day. And then basically, this would be an annual permit that would come in. So that's a little bit different than how we've currently done the, the temporary uses. And again, that's why they're looking at doing this as a separate use. Uh, the reasoning behind that is, so their current partnership is with Rancho Market. And so the one on Redwood Road, they actually have a branch inside. But then the other um, Rancho Market in West Valley is very small, and so there's not room to put a branch inside. And so they basically work with all the Rancho Markets along the whole valley, and then they have a rotation schedule where they go to those sites and drive to each of those locations. And then I have, I'll go through the pictures, just because then you'll get a better understanding of what we're talking about, but um, it's a pretty fancy truck van that they have um, all set up for the, the branch. And basically, there's um, an A T M on the outside and a little like doorbell if you need further assistance, but you can also go inside the unit, and they just have, it's just set up like a bank, so they have a teller that works inside there. And they currently do a lot of community events, so I believe they've already been to West Fest. Um, they're very, they go to Mill Creek quite a bit. And then um, actually, they set this up in Sandy, so one of our newer planning commissioners was familiar with them, because he works with the building department, so he had gone through the review with these guys. Um, but that's basically the request. Again, just adding this as a use that would be allowed in our temporary use category.
Hey, any questions? So with our food trucks, they have to be so far away from another food institution. Do these guys have to stay away from brick and mortar banks?
Yeah, we're not proposing anything like that.
Okay, so they can pretty much set up anywhere, and there's not a limit of how many times a year, just per patient, two times a week?
Yeah, with the um, the first one, that's if they're building a permanent branch and they have a building permit and there's active construction, then they could be there for six months. But then the next one is um, it basically, it does say in partnership with another business, so just trying not to say they're just like moving around, parking wherever they want, but basically they have a relationship set up. And then it would be twice a week, or yeah, no more than two times a week and eight hours a day.
Thank you. Right, uh, we'll go through our resolutions. So we have our certificate for eligible employees of the Department of Public Safety, and we'll turn the time back over to H R. Smell guard.
Thank you so much. Um, so uh, under title uh, forty nine, all agencies that have one or more public safety have to participate in the firefighter surviving spouse stress fund, I'm sorry, public safety and firefighter surviving spouse stress fund. Um, this year, the legislator um, not only are committed to cover medical, but also visual, vision and dental premiums. Um, and the budget impact is thirty five hundred, um, sorry, thirty five thousand, three hundred dollars, and it's, the amount is already allocated through our insurance budgets under the H R department. Uh, we're just bringing it before we do approve it. Are you familiar with the trust? Okay, so it's uh, those that die in the line of duty for the city. Um, title forty nine provides for their medical insurance, and as of this year, vision and dental, the premiums will continue to be paid through the trust. Have questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
All right. Well, now go to Mr. Johnson for resolution twenty five dash eighty seven.
Good afternoon. This is a cooperative agreement with the State of Utah Department of Transportation. Uh, they are preparing to repay fifty six hundred west between Thirty First South and S R two oh one uh, next year. And I was, when generally, and when, when uh, roads are repaved, um, it's generally the practice that the pedestrian ramps need to be rebuilt to the most recent uh, A D A standards. And so that's what U Dot intends to do out there, but uh, many of the sidewalks on fifty six hundred west have been pushed outside of the right of way and sit within a a public sidewalk easement that the city has worked with property owners as things have developed to get those easements in place. And so this agreement gives U Dot license to wo- to work within our easements to upgrade those ramps. Um, and to do that construction on private property, but within the city's easements.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Hey.
Thank you.
All right, we have our consented agenda, which is our typical easements. And does the council have any questions on that item? There's only one right now. And then is there any desire to put either one of the resolutions, the eligibility, the insurance, or the interlocal agreement with U Dot on the consent agenda for next week? Anybody object to that? Okay, we'll move those to the consent agenda. Or June twenty fourth? Why this month is going fast? I might have said it, yeah. Really fast. Hey. Any questions on that? Okay, we have our residential landscaping discussion. We'll invite Ms. Knapp back up to lead that discussion.
All right. I don't think I did the introduction last time. So Jody Knapp with planning and zoning. And um, this is just a continuation of some of our ordinance discussions, and this involves landscaping and surfacing. So unlike last time, we talked to this one, it's just about residential. So we're gonna go through what the current requirements are for landscaping and surfacing, go through some of the common requests that people have been um, bringing up to our. go through some of the common requests that people have been bringing up to our department, some suggested amendments, and then I have some photo examples as well. So first on the website, we basically just have a handout that goes through just the very basics of what the requirements are for landscaping. But in general, we just require landscaping in the front yard on corner lots. If you can see the landscape, if it's outside of the fence, there is a requirement that it be landscaped, but that's separate and outside of the actual requirements in the code. And then park strips, it is the responsibility of the homeowner to maintain those. We don't necessarily have specific requirements, but they just have to complete it in some manner. And then what type of landscaping is required? So currently, the code does require one tree, and then a combination of lawn, shrubs, or ground cover. And then we define ground cover as either being living material or nonliving. And then we have the artificial turf standards as well. And then then with the mineral ground cover, there's some examples there as well. And then the specific requirements are currently, you have to have at least thirty percent of the front yard have live plant material, and the tree canopy does not count towards that requirement. And then where artificial turf is used, that can count one hundred percent as your live plant material. So someone could just do their front yard all with artificial turf if they'd like to. And then we don't require a permit for landscaping, but we do require a no fee permit for if you do artificial turf. And that was just done so you could basically kind of track who's been utilizing that in their landscaping.
Sure.
Yep.
Then we have a standard for artificial turf.
Yes, so that's mentioned with the, the seven two one two seven. There's a whole list of requirements on pile height and how you install it and warranties and things like that. And so that's part of the review that we do with that permit as well.
Right.
And then for surfacing, we allow up to forty percent of a front yard to be hard surfaced for parking. So that's concrete, asphalt, or just any material that they're using to park on. And then you're allowed to increase that to fifty percent if you're on a cul-de-sac or lots on major streets that need a circular driveway. And then a permit for, from Public Works, they, there's a no fee permit for that as well. It's part of the right of way permit, and that's basically just to make sure if they're doing an additional approach or curb cut or filling in the park strip with concrete, that Public Works is aware of that, and they can check if there's any major utilities in there or anything, and then do the review, but there's no cost for that. So just a graphic to show what that looks like. And this part was updated not too long ago in the code, and it was basically, that's why we have the two graphics. It's, and this is a typical R one eight lot. So it just shows if somebody maxes out their surfacing, they still just need thirty percent live plant material. Because before, we kind of said, you know, this is your driveway, and then whatever's left, half of that needs to be landscaped. So it almost penalized people that had small driveways. So we just equalized that out. And so what we, what we've been seeing recently is a lot of people want to add more pavement. They just want either an access to a detached garage or backyard, just extra parking, having a circular driveway, or now especially with the three car garages or RVs, just people want more places to park. And then with landscaping, of course, everyone talks about water usage, and then just having it be less cost and less maintenance if they don't have to do lawn or don't have to do any vegetation. So our proposal first with surfacing, because that's just kind of the easiest to figure out how big your yard is, is just simplifying the code. And so looking at just fifty percent across the board for all lots. So that would just, there wouldn't be any interpretation. We wouldn't have to look at the major street plan to see how big the road is, if they can have forty or fifty cul-de-sac lots, things like that. It would just be just fifty percent across the board. And that just came from, it sounded like there was basically a general consensus that maybe more surfacing wouldn't be a problem. So that's just where we started with that fifty percent. So then what that does is it leaves a little bit smaller space in the yard. And so our proposal is still to keep the material requirements the same, but instead of doing the thirty percent, just do twenty five percent for all lots. So it just basically shifted that percentage and continued that to the landscaping. So what that would look like is if you had a typical R one eight lot, you'd have half of it could be a driveway, and then you do the twenty five percent live plant material. Or if you just kept your, your smaller driveway, you still would do the twenty five percent. So that's kind of the easy part with the numbers. And then the next part is what do we want to see for landscaping? And so that, that I think is up still for a little bit more discussion, and we'll have to dive through the code to actually look at the requirements, but I'm reusing my own slide from last time, but now in a residential sense. So again, this comes right from the water district. It is important to conserve water, but it still is also important to have plants and have a landscape. And it's just because of like heat island effects. So as I go through some of my photos, you, you'll see if you just have no greenery at all, your yard's going to be really hot, and that's your A C costs. Rocky Mountain Power, they have their little A C bumper thing that they have, and they do still talk to you about, you know, still keep landscaping, because otherwise you're going to be running your A C all the time. And then if somebody paves their whole front yard, they're going to have a lot more water runoff, so it causes stormwater problems. We've seen that in Sunset Hills. We had a few lots that paved their whole front yard, and it was a big slope and caused a lot of problems in the neighborhood. So for the examples, these are all from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. And so it's just to show some examples of with our requirements, what yards could look like and what they do look like with what they're utilizing in their grant program and just local scapes and things like this. So these are just all from their website. So you can see here, they do have lawn, but even if you took that portion out here, they have some variety in materials. It's just mostly ground cover and then the plants. And they really don't even have very many plants. They have the one tree and then the live plant material coverage. But if you get the right kind of plant in the right spot and even give it room, it's going to get very big. So you don't have to put a whole bunch of stuff in there in order to make it look interesting and have a nice yard. And then park strip examples, this is kind of the same thing. There's really not that many plants in there, especially on the slide on the right. They just get, they can get really big. And again, different plant materials, using garden boxes, maybe even vegetables.
So how will our code enforcement know that that ice plant is going to get six feet in diameter when they plant it, and it's only six inches to a foot in diameter?
So we do say in the code that it does, it's when they're, they're at full growth. So I mean, there may be some, because even here, like with this example, those are really small junipers. Those things are going to get huge.
Yeah.
So yeah, there, there may have to be some, and that, I mean, that's currently what we look at too. So we'll just have to have, if there's some questions or some education issues, we can look at that. And twenty five percent really isn't a huge number. But yeah, tho- those little green dots are going to get really, really big in a couple of years. And then same here, there's really not that much plant material. It's just you have the bark, you have the little pave way, and then the concrete. So it's just keeping that live plant material in the landscape here as well. And even this one, if you remove the lawn and they had rock there, they still would have the twenty five percent. And it's, it's just kind of over that border area. I tried to do some West Valley examples too, or kind of cut some houses out, but. And then the other part is the decorative dirt. And so I think here is showing a good example of using that as a mulch and having it be part of the landscape. And so that's sort of been one of the interpretation things that code enforcement has been working through, is what do we actually mean by that? And so part of the amendment would just be maybe clarifying that a little bit, that when we say decorative dirt, it's meant more as a mulch, and this again is from Jordan Valley. So not this, because this is kind of what code enforcement is is working within what we've been seeing. So it's not just saying, Kate, no weeds. You do actually have live plant, have to have live plant material. And the dirt should be part of your improved landscaping and not just unmaintained. Yes, thank you, lack of landscaping and unmaintained area. Just a couple of examples of that. Now, in this one, maybe the question too is, is this for parking or just dirt? And again, if you have all rock, there's just really no interest there, and it's going to get hot, which you can see with this one. They tried, but it's so hot, the trees just fried. I definitely don't want people, I know some of these you might recognize, but definitely don't want everyone to pave their whole front yard. Even here, you have both sides of the driveway in front of the house is all paved. The pavement one has been a pretty big one recently. But there's just been, yeah, a lot that are over. This one's well over the fifty percent also in a cul-de-sac. And then the last one I have here, this one is actually right there, about fifty three percent. So it's just to show an example of someone that can make it work, and they have a ton of parking. So they have their driveway area, the part on the side has an extra pad, and then they did the angle around and just based off of the lot size, they were a little bit over. So fifty three, fifty four percent. But just that fifty looked like a good number. That, I mean, that's basically what we're proposing for the code. If there's any thoughts on the percentages or anything, or the makeup, but we'd like to keep live plant material in there and just sort of simplify the code and then go through all the sections and make sure they all make sense in the, the maintenance code for title twenty four, and then for new homes and existing, we just go through and make sure everything says the same thing.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I'm a little nervous about the, the cul-de-sac. I always thought that fifty percent was a lot to ask for some of the cul-de-sacs that I've seen. You know, we, we make them have a three car garage and and it's pretty tough to get fifty percent of that.
We love the front yard. Three car garage.
Yeah.
And it is. Yeah. Pretty sharp. Yeah, it is different.
So I, I would be in favor of lowering it for cul-de-sac.
Yeah, because some of them are so narrow in the front.
Yeah.
Yep, it's just you can't even park in front of your house because the mailbox is there.
Increase the amount of pavement.
Increase the amount of pavement that's allowed on a cul-de-sac. Lower the amount of.
Of green?
Either way, it's twenty five percent.
Landscape. Or, yeah.
Either way, it's twenty five percent of landscape. But it's just a change from fifty to.
Oh, yeah. So yes, we need to increase the percentage for that's allowed for hard surface.
We can look at some of the newer ones and see where they're at too, because most of them are almost eighty percent. So, but if, yeah, if we're looking at just the space in front of like a three car garage, we can, you can look at what we're, what we have now and then see if it brings some examples and have an alternative to increase that. All right.
Now, can you email those to us before? So we have.
The examples? Sure. Yeah, so.
We have some time to study those before we come back.
Okay, yep. Yeah, we don't have any code amendments done yet, so we'll we just wanted to make sure, yep, that these standards sounded okay, and then we'll go back and figure out where all this stuff is in the code and clean it all up, and then bring back a text amendment.
Perfect.
Question, does the plant material count if it's in a pot, or does it have to be planted?
So we do say that it does need to be planted, and that is part of what we want to clean up, because some of the, the cases where we've had people pave their whole front yard, they say, well, can we just put pots on the concrete? And that's really not the intent of landscaping. It's supposed to be in the ground landscaping. And so we have had some people too with surfacing, if because they want to sort of delineate where the edge of the, the parking spot goes and the gravel, so they put pots in. But that's more just to prohibit people from driving over there and parking in it, not necessarily counting those. I think the garden box examples, usually those are, are in the ground, or they have just dirt underneath them, because then it helps with water filtration and things like that. But we have not counted like pots on concrete as landscaping.
So if they put their garden box on top of their concrete or gravel, then that would be fine?
If it was gravel, yes, but not concrete.
Because you know, over at one of the parks, the county put a garden boxes on top of the tennis court.
Okay.
On the concrete. They realized that didn't work, so they moved them, but I'm just thinking of that example as shell. Hey, I don't, any more questions for today?
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, any questions or concerns with the council calendar? No, so future agenda items? Council reports?
We got the mosquito abatement district meeting yesterday. And is the couple of things we have looking at, we monitor a lot of different diseases spread by mosquitoes. And there's a new one coming in. Right now, it's spilled down in the southeast of the country. A mosquito that spreads it is a little more aggressive than some. Is starting to be monitored by the health departments. We'll watch that to see what we come up with. We haven't had any of it come up in our testing. We haven't had any be showing. I'll look at it here. One always worried about having any, any of that come up.
Oh, what is it called?
Yeah.
West Nile?
West Nile.
Okay.
Yeah. So they only put the initials in.
I know, it's like, what is it?
And one other thing that they mentioned is that we are, have a very low mosquito population this year.
Oh, that's nice.
It's been so dry. But through May, we've only trapped eight hundred and eighty nine mosquitoes in all of our traps total. Our five year average through that same period of time is a thousand five hundred and twenty five. So we're way down. And that's going to be a little bit better mosquito here right now, unless it starts storming suddenly, and we turn into a swampland. And then we also talked about the fact that in twenty six, we're going to hold some truth in taxation. Yeah, propose a tax rate. Right now, we still haven't got our certified tax rate from the state. But it will probably lower that tax rate. They never remember, it's five zeros in the number at the end. But ours will understand that. But we'd raise our tax rate, and it would probably add to an individual's tax burden. Ninety nine cents.
A year?
A year. Five dollars a year for business. It's still a lot less expensive than the companies that come out, they, they all abate the mosquitoes in your yard. It doesn't work. Mosquitoes don't care where they go. But I had, had one, we didn't have a weed service, and he was telling me about it Monday as I was leaving from my mosquito abatement district. And I said, you know something? I can get it for free because I pay my taxes. And he's, oh.
You know about that.
Forgot about those. So, well, you can do that, and we'll tell everybody else. And I said, that's fine. But three dollars and fifty cents a year is not bad. mosquito abatement that we get. They will be coming out to present the, when they get it a little more finalized, to present the tax increase information to us. So they may call for a agenda item.
Oh, great. Perfect. Anyone else have anything to read? Perfect. Anyone else have anything to report? Okay. We do not have a need for a closed session, so we just have one more action item.
Motion to reach.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. We'll see you in the other.